I'm going to call the Wednesday, January 20th meeting, 20th, 2021 meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. This meeting is held under the executive order on remote participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 30A, Section 20. This order was effective immediately until it is restricted to other state of emergency is terminated. I'm going to call a roll call Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
I am here.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Thank you. First order of business is minutes of the open session meeting of January 13th for approval.
I move they be approved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made in second to prove, prove the minutes of the open session meeting on January 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero. Thank you. Minutes of the executive session minute, meeting on January 6th, 2021 for approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes, but we hold them as, as it's possible that it may impact litigation.
Yes, and if I may, Mr. Chair, if we could table those until next week. They are being finalized actually still.
And we hope to finalize them today?
No, we're going to wait. So that's fine. We can table them. I'll table them, Joe.
Okay, motion to table. Do we have a second?
A second, yes.
Thank you. The minutes of the executive session last week are tabled. Number five, public comment. Mr. Mullin, any public comment?
I have not heard from anyone who has asked, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number six, facility maintenance and Corona update. John McGowan, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
John.
I'll make a shot. I don't have much to say today. We were in Brookline Court Saturday and Sunday, as I related to you, that Brighton was moving out of Brookline Court. And we were there to assist them and anything we could do. And I was also wanted to retrieve our panels, our Plexi glass panels that we installed. I think it was back in beginning of December. But we retrieved all of those because we might be needing them some, somewhere else. Everything was completed Saturday night and I had the guys come in Sunday and we had a, the judge wanted the place cleaned up and defogged, you know, because there were so many different people in there. And we, we had that done Sunday. That was to, to prevent any, anything from COVID that might be left there. Now, we got a call from Quincy once again, had a person get sick. I believe it was on Friday, but they called up, the judge called me yesterday anyway. And I sent the team down there last night to, to the COVID. You know, wipe everything down, defog the whole building, clean everything up. And I also sent another guy down there today to do it all over again, him and the day custodian. And in the meantime, while we were doing that, we got a call, the grand jury upstairs here had somebody come down with COVID. So we were in the process, I had them do that last night too. And we did a little bit of it up there today and that should be okay to, for tomorrow. And I got a message from Milton, the head probation guy up here, that he was, one of his people were concerned because one of the prosecutors went into their area to use their copy machine. So I'm going to have that defogged tonight and all wiped down. And that's about it right now on the COVID, but as you know, every day it changes and it's not getting any better. It's, in fact, I believe it's getting a little worse. We've had a lot more incidents than we did before. And I'm also working on the signs. I think that, I think we finalized the, the lettering and hopefully it ought to be, I, I know I told you it probably done this week, last week, but I was wrong. Hopefully it'll be done this week and, and that's about it. I don't have much else to report. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. I will.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Collins?
No questions. Nice job, John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stady.
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, through you to our facility manager, John, this seems to be a recurring problem with Quincy. I'm wondering, is there, if you're, if you're tracking it and any of it all, are we looking at a cluster? Is there something more significant going on? Maybe Mike or you can talk about that, but you know, it seems to be a recurring issue with Quincy.
What it is, there's so many people that, there's a lot of people in that courthouse, as you know, on a daily basis and the employees, once they leave, you don't know where they go or what they do. It's basically been all employees that have been sick, Commissioner. They come into work and I've said this, you know, before, you know, they, they have to stress if somebody's, you know, to the employees, if you're sick, don't come into work. I know Judge Carey, a long time ago, I think Mike and I talked about this probably back in March, because people, employees are coming in sick, you know, they, because they don't want to use, they lose their time. And, and that's not a very good, doesn't make for a very good combination when we're doing stuff like this. So when they call up and say that they're, I think this person called up and said that they didn't feel good or something. And the judge is just doing it out of precautions, you know, to make sure because you, you can't take the chance that, you know, somebody comes in and, like, I had my problems with the night crew. One guy come in and we lost the whole night crew for two weeks, as you know. And I'm sure that the judge is worrying about losing the whole probation department, which, you know, none, nobody can afford that. So the stress should be put on anybody that's not feeling well, you know, stay home.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering to support you, John, if we as Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, should we maybe send a letter to that effect to the courts, just to remind them that, you know, they have a duty and so on, just to kind of help them out a little bit? That's all. Just so, we are in charge of the court buildings. It seems like it's an ongoing problem. Would that serve a purpose perhaps? Just send a letter? Those for you and Mike, what do you think? What are your thoughts?
Go ahead, Mike, but I know Mike's just had a long conversation about COVID. I think it was last week with, Jason? I forget who it was with.
Yeah, no, I've been on the phone. I was actually on the phone like with, with Chris McQuade, who is our, who is our trial court, our lease manager. And every time, and every time there is an issue at any hour of the day, on any day, I hear from Chris. And one of the silver linings in this whole process is that we've actually built up a, I think, a much more robust relationship like with the trial court. And I think, oh, you know, not to speak for the trial court commissioner, but I think they're frustrated with these same exact things we are, like of the employees. And I think every, oh, you know, all forms of local government are dealing with the same thing as well. I was reading an article about the town of Whitman last night and how their fire chief actually went to the selectmen's meeting and he basically berated employees for doing like the same exact thing we're talking about. So, you know, I mean, I think, honestly, I think if we were, if the Commissioners were to do a letter like that, very respectfully, I think it could perhaps actually add, add fuel to the fire. Like where the trial court is already on high alert and they've been, I guess frustrated as we have about these issues. I will say also that I've been talking with the trial, with the, with the trial court staff who we've been working with, you know, they deal with all the issues at the book, or at the courthouse in Boston, like in all the middlesex, like in all the middlesex courthouses as well, like in going everywhere. I mean, the pitfall, the pitfield, the new Bedford, Far River, you know, like in we, though we've had a lot of issues really to deal with, I would dare say that, you know, there were other, there were other county courthouses in the state, whether owned and operated by all your counties or owned and operated by the Commonwealth that have actually been, like, a lot worse shape than us in terms of the prevalence. And, oh, you know, I mean, I think as the registrar had mentioned, like before the meeting started, I think a lot of it is just luck. But I also, like, I would point, oh, and hope, I'm in hope to be able to point like to, I think, the emphasis on the cleaning protocols and the regimen that we've had as part of these processes. Like really was kudos to John and his whole crew, like since the beginning of March. I think those efforts have been very effective and very proactive. Obviously, we don't have anything to back that up in terms of any science, but like I would dare say those in our ongoing efforts there have been effective. So I hope that was a very long answer to your question, Commissioner. But I think that message is already there with the trial court.
All right, I'm fine. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just as a note on the Quincy Court, I once was talking to Justice Colvin and I believe that there are 44 district courts in the whole Commonwealth. Quincy is number one and our number two, always with Lowell, is the busiest district court in the whole Commonwealth. That's the whole state, busier than the Boston District Court. So that, I mean, that's quite a, quite a beaten and battered factory that they're working out of. And although it's one of the newer ones, it just gets a ton of, a ton of traffic and a ton of people. And as you know, the, the state is contemplating a new justice center there, but, you know, we're at the mercy of, of the time clock here, when, if and when. I don't think it's in the near future and it's going to take a long time to get done, but we seem to be working it pretty well. I will admit, the first time I got involved in COVID was on a Sunday morning and it was at the Quincy Court due to the first scare that we ever received. And in those days, we borrowed the machine and the sheriff's department came down and helped out. And I remember going from room to room, department to department with John and his people and the sheriff's department. And that was my eye opener. I've done it a few times since, but to see how they do it. It's 10 months ago and it's kind of sad and, you know, it's ongoing everywhere. So we're doing a very, I think, I think we're doing the very best we can. But we have more calls there, but it's also our busiest, busiest place. Okay. John, anything else today?
Thank you.
No, that's about covers it, Commissioner, Chairman.
Are you dancing with the snow gods because we haven't had a drop of snow?
Oh, I'm hoping we don't get any.
It'll be a blizzard Monday now, that's it.
Yeah, it's, we were lucked out last year and hopefully we do the same thing this year. That'll be good for everybody. Not the plow guys, but it'll be good for us.
Any other questions, John?
Nice job, John. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We have no appointments today outside of the meeting. Do we have any old business?
Not that I know of. That's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay, we have a personnel matter, a matter in the registry of deeds, only one this week.
Yep.
We have a motion.
Needed or question or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the contingent employment of an employee as a part-time worker at the registry as requested by the registrar of deeds.
Do we have a second?
A second and a quick question if I may.
Sure.
Again, I'm new at this. I thought, and I could be wrong, I might just got this last night. Wasn't this the fellow who was just replaced by Noel? Is that the same guy? Are we bringing him back now? I thought he was leaving. I thought that guy.
I'm going to defer to the Commissioner, to the register here.
Oh.
Right.
Through the chairs, yeah.
Right, through the chair. Right, through the chairman. Is that, it's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, through you to the register. Is that person, wasn't that the person we replaced last week? I'm just confused. Or is that somebody else?
No, no, you're not, not confused. And one of the reasons we're doing this, a couple of different reasons, but you know, with the budgets, you know, being tight, you know, he did retire or, you know, and we need somebody. Part of this is sort of to, to stay operational, but to transition. I know a few years back, you know, some, some key employees retired, not, not in the registry, but in another department and in the, in the, actually in the county office where, you know, there was a, you got to bring people in even though it's tied up. So this money is being used to help transition because you can't bring somebody. It used to be you could overlap it a little, but you know, the budget's tight and you can't do that anymore. And the second reason it's needed is we, we do have money in the temporary salaries, Commissioner Stady, and we've had two employees work there, but they have, they haven't, they're not on the payroll now. And one person, Rich Sorani, a longtime employee, he's been out since the fiscal year started. And he's a part-time employee, so it doesn't affect health insurance or anything like that, but he had a serious head injury. So Mr. Glenn is being brought back just to, to help train the new person, to help oversee that and also to kind of fill a need. Because, you know, Rich Sorani has been out since the fiscal year started with a head injury.
Okay.
I hope that answers it.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
I had, I had a quick question if I may, Joe.
Sure.
Okay, Billy, so you said that Mr. Glenn retired. So the first papers that came to us last week said he retired and then it was changed and it said he was just leaving.
Well, I guess, in his letter to us, it said retirement and, and, you know, I don't query whether people retiring, I guess, I guess, I guess he, he, years he had in another system, he, he had taken the cash. So that, I guess, that's why those papers had to be amended. Because when the retirement board was checked, it's not a retirement. So it's too bad. I, I think people don't like checking the box resignation. You know, when we get the letter, it said retirement, but you know, it was all good. He's worked, Bob's been a long time working in the public sector, a long time, you know, and a person who did a great job here. So I guess the letter came in resignation and that's what we used because, and ultimately it wasn't, not resignation, he used the word retirement.
Time, right. That's what I said.
People just don't like the word resigned. It sounds like it's bad. And Bob Glenn didn't, he's a great employee. He didn't leave in a bad way, if you know what I mean. But we did have to amend that because it was pointed out to us that whatever years he had, he worked up at the State House. He, he didn't have those years because he had took the money and run, so to speak. I remember those days, you know, but, and hadn't bought them back. So yes, you're quite right, Commissioner Collins. It ended up being redone as a, as a resignation, just to check the boxes that needed to be checked.
Thanks, Billy. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion on this matter at the registry of deeds.
I, I did make a motion.
Okay, motion made in second. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Number 10, payroll and expense warrants for this week.
Dick, you want to run with that?
Yeah, was that the one we were going to get some additional information on? Mike, you mentioned?
I'd like, I'd actually like to share my screen, if that's okay, Commissioner, because I did actually send it out to.
I, I actually have it. Do you want me to run with it?
Oh, you have?
I got it. Okay, so payroll and expense warrants for approval, January 20th, 2021. Motion to approve this. Four different things on this. Item one is county weekly, weekly payroll 21-19 in the amount of $150,258.60. Item two, county expense warrant 1321, the amount of $46,950.55. Item three, Aggie expense warrant 21-07, the amount of $281,045.91. And item number four, Wallaston Country Club Enterprise credit card payment?
Yes.
Shouldn't that read Presidents?
It's, I, I like, that is how it's, I like actually like illustrated on the invoice.
Okay, but we both, but you and I know it's Presidents, okay. Dated 1/6/20 in the amount of $2,080. So I'll make that one big motion to approve those four items.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded on the payroll and expense warrants. All in favor? Thank you. Number 11, bid openings. Any bid openings? None today? Okay, number 12. Contracts awards. We have none?
I, yes, we do on the second page.
I'm trying to find my second page. Go ahead. What is it?
Yeah, like we have, like we have a golf cart concession for a period of, of three years for the Wallaston Recreation Facility.
So this is, this is awarding of the contract for three years from the golf cart company?
Yes, and we opened this bid, I believe, like actually last Thursday afternoon with the chief purchasing officer. And there was only one bid.
Is it the same company we were with before?
I, yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. And I have an overview. Actually, I apologize. I just actually started to share my screen again. But, and I apologize, I meant to actually include this in your packet. Yesterday was like a time crunch of a day. But, yes, it's, the bid that we received was from Country Club Enterprises. I, yes, and it is, it is the vendor we've had and it is the vendor that we're proposing to enter into another, I'm into another agreement with. And, like, and we've haven't had any issues with them and that's, and this whole, and the pricing structure what we have envisioned and what we were hoping and anticipating as well. And I do have on the, I do have Nancy Rockwell on the Zoom in the event that you have any specific questions too.
I have a question if I may. Was this recommended for approval by Carl Minor and Dana?
Yes, it was, Commissioner Collins. A copy went down to Carl and I did receive back that he is in agreement that it should be awarded to Country Club Enterprises.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it.
Any other questions about the golf club concession at the Wallaston Recreation Facility known as Presidents? For three years?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion made in second to approve the awarding of the golf cart concession for a period of three years at that Wallaston Recreational Facility known as Presidents Golf Course. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In front of the county director.
Yes, I think before, I think before that, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have updated COVID protocols for your review. Oh, you know, in the review of the public, I mean, other departments as well. Just really to back up and to explain how we got here. At the county administration office, on December 22nd, we sent out our proposed updated protocols to all of our departments. That was the commission as a first reading at the Commissioners' meeting on December 23rd of last month. And just backing up in the meeting, like in, like in the email that we sent out to our departments on the, on the 22nd of December, we also asked for feedback, we had asked for feedback and input. At the time as well, we also sent a proposed version to the union and asked that if the union, you know, like would like to meet to discuss any of the impacts of the proposed protocols on any type of working conditions or any issues as they relate to, to the existing bargaining agreements. Oh, you know, like we wanted to give them the opportunity to do that. So as you know, on the 23rd of December, the commish, the Commissioners had a brief discussion, I believe. Oh, you know, they accepted them as a first reading and then we continued working and trying to do, do diligence on them. We had a call at the end of December with the Dedham Public Health Department. We wanted to make sure what we were proposing was in line with the public health protocols at both the state and local level that are out there. And especially, I mean, especially based on the footprint that we have here in the town. Like if we did have an issue, oh, you know, we need to deal directly with the town. We wanted to be in sync with what, oh, you know, they were actually thinking, oh, you know, and recommending as part of their efforts with the town as well. You know, like, and based on those processes, I can base on the feedback and the conversations that we've had with other departments as well. And, and I know the Commissioners have had with other, you know, with other departments, including the registry. We, we had updated our proposed, our proposed protocols into the document that you have before you now. And a few things we did, I like actually, I'm actually propose actually changing a few things. Like in compared to the initial proposed protocols, again, you will note on page nine that, that the county Commissioners in the county is proposing an extension of the FF, of the FF CRA provisions till the end of March. And I think, and I want to really thank the Commissioners, like for their support of that. I think that really gives, like, a lot of clarity, you know, and support, you know, to both our non-union employees and our union employees as well. But also, over the last few weeks, we've had to, there are other departments, obviously, in the county. And we've worked to, I'll make sure what we're proposing, we wanted to know how they interact and intersect with the protocols of other departments as well. And I think generally speaking, I, as a baseline set of protocols, I think these, like, I think, oh, I think the updated proposed protocols really serve a purpose. Like we're gonna, we are proposing to keep, to keeping the same 14-day quarantine and isolation requirement like for part, for positive employee cases, like if, like, and for quarantines as well, do, you know, due to a close contact. Like, and so that we, like, are all uniform in terms of how we handle those issues and treat those issues as a county. One of the things that we've worked through and we have, like, and we've actually received guidance from the Dedham Public Health Nurse and the Public Health Department is, is if we have an employee who does test positive, like whether they will need to have a negative test to come back to work. And what we've heard on that, even though I think we can all understand and appreciate the rationale behind that thinking, that based on the, on the nature of the coronavirus, and I'm not like a scientist or a public health expert, but based on the evolving nature, it is known, like, it's already known that there have been many instances in which a person who tests positive, you know, for COVID and recovers, you know, they may act, they may actually have and carry like a positive result for the months following their symptoms and their diagnosis or their positive tests. So, like, we did take that, you know, we did take that part out based on the public health advice we've heard from the town of Dedham. But you will note that the county, like, has proposed in the protocols would require that I'm an employee who really needs a quarantine based, I'm on a direct contact. You know, they would be required to be tested in order to come back to work. And they would be required to be tested, I'm actually no earlier than day eight of the 14-day quarantine period. Assuming they don't have any symptoms or they don't become actually symptomatic before then. Obviously, obviously, if they're symptomatic, like, or they, like, oh, if they have any issues, like, we, I think it's implied, like, and I want it. like, we, I think it's implied, like, and I want it to be implied, I mean, knowing that we we wholeheartedly believe that they should seek medical attention and treatment right away. But, Alec, and finally, you will note that, I'm in addition, I'm in addition to really outlining and memorializing the cleaning protocols, we wanted to get, like, all of those in writing, you know, so to what is expected of of our facility's maintenance team, like, is understood. Oh, and there's a wide and broad understanding of what those efforts involve. But in addition to that as well, like, we did define what the county's, what the county's definition of a close contact would be. And I know there is variation about, oh, exactly how do you define a close contact? Oh, you know, but, like, our definition is, again, based on, is based on the consultation and the guidance that we've received from the Dedham Public Health Department. And as I mentioned at the outset, like, I do envision, like, or understand, or understand that some departments, they may have, they might have a more stringent interpretation. However, for the purposes of the county, and as a baseline protocol, our set of protocols for the employees that we, in the County Administration Office, are responsible for, like, in oversee their operations, we wanted, oh, you know, that that definition to be understood. So with that, I, oh, I expect some conversation, but I just really wanted to try to frame all the issues and the, like, and the updates that we've made, and then go from there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comment?
I'll jump in.
Go ahead, Commissioner Collins.
I saw what you'd proposed there, Mike, and then I saw information that came over from the registry, and they had some different suggestions as to how things should happen. It appeared to me that the platform that the director's put forward is a, is a good basis for discussions with the union. But I would like to take the registry's concerns into consideration also. So for that reason, I just suggest that we have enough to go forward with beginning negotiations next week. But I, I'd like to talk about it some more, maybe talk about the COVID-19 protocols a little bit more next week. Because I want to, I want to look at the registry's proposals and see how they best fit into our proposals.
Okay, I have a comment on that one, one went through, but Commissioner Stady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echoing Mr. Collins' concern and feelings, it's, we're close. But yet, again, looking at the material we just received from the Registrar of Deeds, we've still got, I think, some significant differences that should be addressed. I think it'd be easier if we could break it down into, you know, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, I think we all are. But you've got the case where there's someone who's test positive and they're at work, and the one who's been in contact with somebody positive at work. And you've got the one who has been perhaps positive at home, and then the one with a relative. So you've got four different cases, and we have two different sets of days. And also, whether they get tested or not, there seems to be that big difference there. So trying to, trying to separate it and get the right thing. I know that, I talked to Mike about this yesterday, Director Mullin, and he said he's trying to follow closely to Dedham Health Agent and their recommendations. But I think I still feel, yeah, we could go forward, I think, but I think there's a little, a couple of things that should be worked out. Maybe we could have a little more discussion on between Billy's suggestions, O'Donnell's, and what Mike has before put forth. So, you know.
I, I will support a motion to continue this till next week. However, like a lot of other things, these all take a life of their own. We, we've, we've been working through personnel policies for a couple of years, we've been working through other things. This is new to everyone, but everyone has their own ideas. It's impossible to get our arms around it if we just don't sit down and settle on the best product we can. It doesn't mean it can't be amended. It doesn't mean that some departments can not be, can, can, it means that some departments can differ, be a little different than others. But if we don't come up with a policy soon, and I've gotten one call from an employee, but in last, last April, I was getting calls about policy, this department does it this way, this department, what's going on? And then when we promulgated something, I got a call from the same people saying, that isn't what I had in mind. Well, they, you know, we don't want to have 10 policies out here. I'm trying to get it done in one fashion. The fact that we're spending so much time with the Dedham Health Department, I mean, it's common sense. So much of our operation, a great large percentage of it is in Dedham, but not all of it. But, I mean, I think there is, I'm sure they're capable, just as the Westwood one, or the Canton one, or the Quincy one. But we've got to get our arms around this because if we don't have a uniform policy, or as uniform as we can get, we're never going to please everyone, and it's very difficult. And when you have to go back to the union, I mean, time is of the essence, and I'd like to, I will certainly support putting it off, but I'd like to bring it to a head this month.
Mike, are you okay with pushing this out one week?
No, I don't have any problem with it at all.
No, no, I was asking Mike. Sorry, Joe.
Anything we can say now might help us for this week, but, you know, the burden falls on the director and Michelle, which is fine. But it is my goal to get this done and put aside. Doesn't mean it can't be amended. It doesn't mean we can't, you know, because...
Mr. Chairman?
A lot of people have a lot of different ideas, and I mean the employees. Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Well, I think next week we've got to wrap it up. I agree. We've got to get this done, and it's imperative we do it. I just wanted to maybe just, again, reflect in a general way, some of Commissioner O'Donnell's concerns, just in a general way. And I think he makes a good point where we're talking about impact bargaining, and then we're talking about a policy. We're probably got a two-headed monster here. We should separate out the things that are policy in nature. For example, cleaning of a building, those don't have to be barging, we're just, that's a policy. And then as far as what we need to bargain for, maybe have a separate type of a statement or draft or something like that. Might mean a little more work. I'm not trying to make, create more work for Mike, but I'm saying, pull out the stuff that doesn't have to be in there, that we're going to just do anyways, as a matter of fact. Or narrow down, if I could, narrow down the things to be impact bargaining. Again, I think the key things are, it seems to me, the quarantine period, we can't agree on, at least at moment, at the moment, and whether or not a person has to ask for a second test. There seems to be those, the two big differences. So I would suggest that a conversation take place between the Registrar and Mike, and, you know, whoever else has to be involved to kind of iron this out, and let's get it done by next week. Bring something to the board.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, like, and if I couldn't, Mr. Chair, I have actually two thoughts. I mean, one of the things, I mean, in terms of the impact bargaining, oh, like, and, oh, and the potential, oh, like, of having to impact bargain any, oh, you know, like, any part of the protocols. Oh, you know, to be clear, we are proposing protocols. We don't have any idea yet because we haven't had a conversation with the union. What pieces of those protocols, they either want to impact bargain or have a conversation about. So we don't actually know what those are yet. Oh, you know, they could be everything. Oh, you know, they could be one sliver, or it could just be having an understanding of of our thinking in them as well. You know, that is all gonna be hopefully fleshed out when we meet with the union. On next Wednesday, on the 27th, I believe, right? Like, I believe the morning of the commissioners' meeting, but I could be wrong because, oh, you know, over the last few weeks, there's been a bunch of dates about a whole host of things in my head. Like, I would also say, like, respectfully as well, that, you know, as Commissioner Stady had mentioned, you know, there are differences, and a few key differences as to how we're approaching to move forward with the protocols. And on those, I mean, I think we can all, I'll probably talk a nauseam about how I feel, how about them, based on our conversations with the, oh, you know, with the Dedham Public Health Nurse, in what the register, oh, you know, has been following in terms of protocols as well. What I would like is, like, hopefully some direction from the commissioners in terms of which, like, which line of thinking they would like to see proceed. Because, oh, you know, until then, I could, oh, I could spin, all of us would be spinning our wheels for a week or longer, and I don't want to keep doing that either.
I definitely don't want to do it, if we can, if we can, you know.
Mike, are you okay with a vote next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may to facilitate, I'd be very happy with your permission and the boards to set up a meeting with Billy and Mike and be a part of it, if you want. And maybe the three of us can work out something and then have something we can bring back for a vote next week. I'd be glad to facilitate that. Or if not...
I'll take a page out of Chairman O'Brien's book.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Stady, I'm going to delegate you to work on the COVID policy with Director Mullin and Register O'Donnell as our representative.
Spoken like the true friend.
Words, words I heard a lot the last few years.
All right, I'll tackle that. We'll set something up.
Okay, great.
See if we can get this done.
All right, let's just have a motion to continue this.
All right, so moved. We'll motion table the policy discussion and vote until next week.
Second. All in favor? This is continued, this matter is continued to next week. COVID next. Report of the County Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few things I just want to provide an update on. Number one, first of all, just as a follow-up to the conversation about the fiscal year 2022 budget process and the timeline that took place last week. On Friday, we sent out all the budget spreadsheets, all the budget hearing information, and all the backup. I was part of that, of the whole process as well, and we sent it out to all of our departments. And again, we are asking for all the departmental budgets, actually backed by, by February 9. So the FY '22 budget process is officially underway, and the FINCOM will be meeting next week as well, at, I'm at 2:00 PM on the 27th to discuss, you know, what they envision as the FINCOM's process as well, and, oh, you know, and how they're going to continue to weigh in and to be involved in the process heading forward. So that is exciting. Work with the Abrahams Group is continuing in the last, as I mentioned last week, but it's really, like, it's really front and center now. There's significant, there's significant efforts being made on capital planning. I'm on benchmarking and looking at how we as Norfolk County, existing, compare to Plymouth and Bristol Counties as well. Oh, you know, can really, when we look at the data and the information, really using data, oh, you know, like where we can make real comparisons, and, like, in providing and putting all the information in context that is appropriate and applicable there. A lot of efforts have also been made on the forecasting related to our budget. I can both the expenditures and revenues as well. And that's been helpful. And we also have initiated a conversation between the Abrahams Group and the trial court as well. Like, a lot of, a lot of what we do in facilities involves and intersects with the, you know, intersects with the trial court in terms of the reimbursement. Oh, you know, in terms of, oh, you know, like, in terms, in terms of them actually reimbursing us for a lot of our capital. And we want to have the, like, and we feel it's important for the trial court to, oh, you know, actually weigh in and oh, you know, about their processes to help the Abrahams Group really know and understand all of our operations, how we're, how we are reimbursed, the process in which we go through with the audit and so forth. So all that is, is very much underway, and I want to, and I want to thank all of our departments. Oh, at this point, this whole process and this whole analysis is involving all of our departments, and everyone has been involved. So I want to, oh, you know, I want to thank everyone in every department for their commitment to this whole process. About relating to a lot of the capital work we're doing under the bond, under the bond proceeds, like, we should be, we're coming to a point now, we're getting a lot closer at the putting the Superior Court Dome out to bid, so we can start that project and hopefully have it, I'll have it ready for the upcoming construction cycle. And I was actually on the, I was on the phone with the folks from the trial court to loop them in, and to make sure, oh, you know, everyone is all coordinated in that, actually, actually, earlier this afternoon, I mean, earlier this morning. And then the engineering, like, for the, for like the ear handle of systems in Stoughton, you know, that is, that is almost done. And we, like, and both Nancy and I and John McGowan have been following up with, with Mark Tocchi from Crossfield Engineering, who's our mechanical engineer, like, and working with us on the specs of that whole process. We're trying to finish that up, so that could get out to bid as well. Like, and we can move forward with a fully, like, with a courthouse in Stoughton, obviously, with a fully functional, oh, you know, like, a fully functional ear movement system as well. So it's been busy. It's, honestly, like, it seems like we just met last week, but everything's moving forward, and it's moving forward in a real positive way. So that is all...
Remind you, we met Friday. I don't want you to forget that.
I will never forget Friday, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just want to be sure. Commissioners, any questions of Director Mullin?
Nice job, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the director.
Yes.
How are we doing on the care's reimbursement?
Care's reimbursement?
Just bringing it up.
Yeah, no, I reported to you last week that at the time, I had followed up, I believe, last Monday or Tuesday with the state, and they had indicated that that they expected the reimbursement to, the approximately $250,000 reimbursement to hit, to hit our bank account on this past Monday. I have checked in with the Treasurer's Office, and that hasn't happened yet. So I'm going to be following up with A&amp;F this afternoon. At the same time, we are moving forward because that, the submission that included all of the expenses for the $250,000, I believe, I forget the cutoff date that we use, but roughly speaking, that only took us till, or included our expenses till through approximately the end of October. And we've absorbed additional expenses since then, both the county and the school. And I, again, want to thank Nancy Rockwell for, for her work on this, but she has been compiling, on putting everything together for a second submission. So, like, I do expect that to be presented actually sometime in, in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Mike.
Anytime, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, are there any topics that we didn't reasonably anticipate? Did you have anything come in late?
No, I did not. Not this week, Commissioner, no.
Is there anything the commissioners would like to talk about this week that we haven't covered? And I see that we have executive session here, but it was just put on as a placeholder. We thought maybe that was going to be the COVID discussion, going to be an executive session, and they weren't.
Yes.
So there's going to be no executive session?
No executive session.
Correct. Okay, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of adjournment? Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see... This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, we'll see you next week and stay safe.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, we'll be in touch. All right.